Okay, my name is Mark Hokey. I'm executive editor of the Herald-Stanley. I want to welcome you to this editorial board meeting with candidates from the Albert Gallatin School Board. We have six candidates running in the May 21st primary for four seats on the board. The candidates are incumbents Edward Andrew and Kenneth Plisco, and challengers Michael Dunham, Scott Golitz, Terry Ryan, and Doug Schultes. All of Crossfiled except for Golitz, who's running only on the Democratic tickets. With us today are candidates Michael Dunham, Terry Ryan, and Doug Schultes. We want to thank the candidates for agreeing to meet with us today. We appreciate you coming in and sharing your views with our readers and viewers. In addition to myself, Carla Di Stefano, features editor, and Bart Panarski, publisher, are present as editorial board members. The candidates will have three minutes to give opening and closing statements and three minutes to answer questions. Members of the board may ask follow-up questions, and the candidates will have three minutes to answer those questions as well. So we'll start out with the opening statements, and we'll go in alphabetical order. So I'll give that to you, Mr. Dunham.
My name is Michael Dunham. I am a lifelong resident of the Albert Gallatin Area School District. I've spent 36 years in teaching, as well as six years previously on the board. I feel that I bring... I feel that I bring a wealth of knowledge. I'm willing to work with other members of the board because one of the most important things is compromise and looking at all sides of the issue. My past experience in the board, I think, has been a positive one, and I'll do everything that I can to make the district safe and secure for our students and give the taxpayers the best deal for their dollar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Ryan?
Hi, my name is Terry Ryan. I'm a resident of German Township. I graduated from German Township High School in 1963. I've been a resident of German Township for many years. I left after I graduated from high school, attended a university in Maryland, and I taught school in Maryland, Virginia, and Florida. I've also attended Virginia Tech, as well as Florida International University. I was a vocational instructor and high school football coach and baseball coach. I've ran for this seat before, folks. And if you recall, one of the reasons I'm running again this time. Last time, I told the voters, you will get a tax increase soon. One month after this board took office, they popped us with a millage increase. Then last year, they popped us with another millage increase. Where now, our millage in Albert Gallatin School District is 12.4870. Folks, you've got to elect individuals that has the senior citizens, those on fixed incomes, and those that are out of work, do no follow of their own, and you've got to consider raising these taxes and how to spend this money. I really feel that there's many places in our school budget where cuts could be made. But it seems like when you're spending other people's money, that's the easy thing to do. Pop it on those individuals that can really afford, at least, to pay these taxes. So that's one of the reasons why I'm running this time. I feel that we need board members there, and you know, folks, we're here, and you're listening to us. You are, in effect, hiring us to do a job for you. And I do believe that, and I have to say this, the two incumbents that are running this time aren't here. So whoever heard of hiring someone, if you don't know, appear for a job interview. So folks, we're here, we're willing to answer the questions, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank the Herald-Stanley again for giving us the opportunity to come to you, the voters, the Albert Gallatin School District, and to evaluate three of us and see whether you feel that we can do the job that you expect out of us and hire us. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schultes?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Doug Schultes. I'm a lifelong resident of the Albert Gallatin School District. I make my home in Nicholson Township with my wife Janet. I graduated from the Albert Gallatin High School in 1998. After that, I went to West Virginia University, where I graduated in 2002 with a Bachelor's of Arts degree in history and political science. After that, I spent three years at the University of Pennsylvania School of Law, where in 2005 I graduated with a George Doctorate degree. My career is I practice law. I'm licensed in both West Virginia and Pennsylvania. My main office being in Smithville, while also an office in Union Town. I am president of the Smithville Rotary Club, a member of the Knights of Columbus in Mason Town, and I am solicitor for Nicholson Township. Additionally, I'm also a member of the Student Advisory Committee for the SIG grant, the SIG grant being the federal money that the Albert Gallatin School District was able to obtain. And it's been part of that SIG grant, that SIG grant committee, being part of the Student Advisory Committee, that's piqued my interest in... And for the third time, that has piqued my interest in running for school board. I always had the opportunity to be able to talk with the teachers, interact with them, seeing what's going on, and to be able to have an idea about what's happening in the district. As such, I would like to be able to make our schools the very best they can be. I think we owe that to our students, to have the best schools we possibly can have. We need to have good students who will then make for good communities, which will allow them to be able to succeed in what they do, to go forward, and to be able to make something of themselves later in life. I also believe that we need to be stewards of the money that we are entrusted with. We need to make certain that we make good decisions, to make certain that we use our funding the best possible way it can be. Right now, the school district is actually in the black, and that's a wonderful thing, but we need to make certain we continue that way. We need to make certain that we continue to be the best we can possibly be. I have no agendas. My sole idea, sole reason for owning is to make certain that we have a good school and to create opportunities for our children, for our students. Currently, I do not have any children in the school district. However, my wife Janet and I will be shortly working on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Start out with the first question, and I'll take the first question. The Albert Gallatin School District failed to meet goals, needed to make adequate yearly progress, also called AYP, on Pennsylvania System School Assessment, PSSA testing for 2012. Putting the district on a warning notice, the district will have to meet AYP for two consecutive years to move back on track and meet all measures by 2014. Are you concerned about the failure of students to reach these goals, and what should be done to put the district back on track? Start out with Mr. Ryan.
Folks, I believe that every school district in Fayette County, except maybe Frazier, they haven't met their goals as far as testing the students and having the proficiency that the state requires. Now, am I in favor of testing kids to see what they know, to see how proficient they are? No, I'm not in favor of testing children. You know, sometimes, and I've heard this from many parents, we teach kids how to take tests, not so much common sense. You know, folks, this is something a lot of people don't realize. Education starts at home. And if you have dysfunctional families, then for the most part, a child entering school is going to be a little bit behind. We need the cooperation of the parents. You know, we have fantastic teachers, I'm convinced of that. Yeah, there may be some teachers that don't do their job great, but most of the teachers, believe me, are A number one. So they do their best to try and teach our kids, and they probably teach them how to take tests. Now, I know the kids this week are taking the PSSA test, and I'm not sure they're going to be taking them next week. But what do we do as a community? Teachers are doing all they can do, as far as I'm concerned. You need the cooperation of the home, you need the cooperation of the parents. If kids are coming from dysfunctional families, then that's a problem. You know, all the school districts in this county, except, like I said, Frazier, are below standards, and there has to be a reason why. I don't think it's because we have poor teachers. I just think maybe the economics of this area has a lot to do with it. You know, whenever you have parents that don't have a great education and don't get a good education, you do expect possibly for them then to take the time to teach their students or their kids at home how to do their homework. Kids, I think, for the most part, want to learn, but it's the environment a lot of times that they're in. So again, the state mandates, they cut our funds, and Governor Corbett has cut our funds as far as education goes. But you know, folks, when he cut our funds, he cut our funds because there's basically not enough money to fund education. And same thing with the federal government, they can print money, but the states can print money. So he has a choice, the governor has a choice. Do we go further and further and further in debt with all the interest, or does he cut funds here and there to try to balance, make a good balance? Later on, hopefully in this discussion, I will discuss...
Your 30 seconds.
I will discuss House Bill 76, and what the great advantages are to this House bill if it's passed, and how Albert Gallatin School District will benefit if House Bill 76 is passed by our state legislature. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Schultes?
Thank you, sir. Regarding the proficiency levels on the PSSA testing, I believe it is a concern because the tests are testing for a basic proficiency in different skill levels, and I think it's very important that the students have a basic proficiency in the skill levels. Now, I can't say that I'm a fan of the PSSA testing. I mean, it's a test, it's a... It doesn't necessarily prepare you for life to take a test, but at the same time, it is testing whether the students have a minimum proficiency in certain areas. And I think it's important that we have a proficiency in these levels so that the students can go on to the next level, whether it be a job, or whether it be higher education, and so on and so forth. So I think it's important for the students in the school district to be able to meet those standards. Now, the problem, of course, is how do you do that? And the question is, is it, do you need more time with the students? Do you need different teachers? Do you need different techniques? And I can't tell you off the top of my head what the answer is, but I would like to have the opportunity to find out and to be able to help the school district meet those proficiency levels. I know that, I believe that 95% of our teachers are doing a wonderful thing and doing a great job. And I know, for example, that we will shortly in this district be implementing a Pennsyl educator effectiveness rubric, and to make certain that the teachers are good teachers, and to be certain that the principals will evaluate the teachers, and the administration will evaluate the principals, and make certain we have good teachers, and to make certain that each teacher is doing the best job. And that's what we owe to the students, to be able to do the best job we can, and to make certain they can meet the minimum levels for the PSSAs, and to be certain that they can succeed in the next level. So while I'm not necessarily a fan of standardized testing, I am a fan of the students being able to meet the requirements they need to move forward and do well in their careers in life. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dunham?
The rationale behind the federal and state mandated test really, really handcuffs what any school district in the state is trying to do. The attainment of the goals is unrealistic, and the academic achievement that these tests purport to attain for student achievement is, in the real life, is just not attainable. The test requires achievement proficiency levels in the coming year of 100%. We are teaching the test to the students because the state and the federal government demands that that type of achievement levels be attained. This is the real world. We need to do our best to give the students in the Albert Gallatin Area School District the education that will provide them the best chance to succeed in life. And scoring, or attempting to score 100% on a standardized test made up by some politician in Washington DC or Harrisburg is not the answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, everyone moves on to your second question. Bart, you want to take that question?
There's a proposal to change the way the Fayette County CTI operates. Under this proposal, students would spend their final two years of school exclusively at the CTI. Do you favor this change? Why or why not?
I'll start. Mr. Schultes?
Thank you. I would favor the change. The current arrangement of the Fayette County CTI is such that the students will spend part-time at the high school of the day and part-time at the tech, Career Technical Institute. And what happens is, is that the students are not getting enough opportunity to spend time at the Career Technical Institute. They're not getting enough time in the shop, they're not getting enough time to be able to do the, whatever they have, whether it be welding, auto body, whatever, computers, whatever they're doing there. And so I believe a change to either a system where they spend two years there, or whether it be half a semester on and a semester off, whether it would be either of those, I think would be a good change. Because I do not think the current arrangement is working the way it is. And I know what would happen is, is we would probably need to arrange some different changes for teachers. There'd probably be teachers that would need to spend more time at the CTI school, but I think that would just, that wouldn't necessarily be a problem. It'd just be a little bit of a rearrangement. And so the students at the technical school would be able to better be able to have that shop time, have that time with the technical school, and be able to better have, learn, better be able to spend some time in their different avenues that they're willing, that they're engaged in. So I would be in support of a two-year term for the students, or in the alternative, maybe a semester on and a semester off. But I know that I don't agree with the current arrangement, and I believe it needs to be changed. Thank you.
I believe that there has been some discussion that possibly if they make this change, that they may have to hire some more teachers, and that there may be some expense involved. Would it be something that you would feel strong about this enough, even if you had to raise taxes for it?
I don't know necessarily if we would have to raise taxes. I don't necessarily believe we would need to. I think that it could just be a rearrangement and of that nature. I don't necessarily believe we should raise taxes. I believe we should work within our means, and I believe we still should be able to accomplish that avenue without having to raise taxes, and to still be able to get the students the teaching that they need.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dunham.
I think it's too early to make a definite decision, one way or the other, as far as what plan would be the best plan. I do, however, feel that we need to change the scheduling that is occurring now. It's not suitable. The students are losing too much instructional time. We need to seriously look at one of, one of two proposals that has been made, whether it would be for having juniors and seniors attend their last two years there exclusively, or several years ago, there was a schedule where semester rotation was done. I would like to look at the investigation plans into those two, and then make a decision to see which one would be providing the students more instruction and to do it without raising taxes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Ryan?
Well, being a former vocational teacher, I'm on record, and I went to the operating committee many years ago when they went to this new system. And I emphatically told them, this is not the way you teach vocational education. Half a day and a half a day back at the home school, I thought was the most ridiculous thing I ever heard of. You know, let's imagine now you are going to teach someone to drive a car. You take him out for 30 minutes, and then maybe next day, 30 minutes, or you take him out for an hour. The more you do anything with your hands at one given time, the better and more proficient you become at it. So to have these kids go back and forth a half a day and a half a day is absolutely nonsense and ridiculous. And whoever came up with that idea, I wonder exactly what they were thinking of. But you know, the operating committee had to okay it at that time, and I would just question, how many of you have had a vocation, and how many of you have ever taught vocational education, or even aware as to what was going on there at the school, to send the kids out there for a couple hours at a time? You know, when you're tearing a transmission apart, you don't send the kids out and spend two, two and a half hours tearing half the transmission apart, then the other half, the kids come in and finish it, and then the next day, then you go over the parts that you tore apart. No, folks, you don't do it that way. It's all at one time. So I'm in favor of the juniors and the seniors staying there for two years. I'm also in favor of naturally having academics possibly talk there as well. Now, Mark, you didn't ask the question a while ago. Would that increase taxes? Not necessarily, because if you take kids out of each one of the high schools, that means that there ought to be teachers back at the high schools that may have smaller classes or some adjustments, like Mr. Dunham had suggested, that adjustments be made. And I believe that if you bring maybe some teachers, maybe from the high schools, out to there and teach the basics, whether it be English is, or math, and whatever, onsite, there has to be some sort of arrangements made. But I do believe that the more a vocational student gets at one time, and the more they are, the more time they spend, the more instructional time they get, believe me, they're going to attain all the basic job entry skills, if not more, to get whatever they need, whatever trade they decide to go into. So I am in favor of having two years at the VOTEC school for the juniors and the seniors.
Okay, thank you very much. Carla, you want to take the next question?
Sure. A number of school district officials are upset with the funding of cyber schools. What changes, if any, would you like to see happen? Overall, do you see cyber schools as being a positive or a negative?
I'll start with Mr. Dunham.
Cyber schools in the Albert Gallatin Area School District siphon off approximately $1 million from the education of the students in Albert Gallatin, and that's not the worst part. The worst part is, there are a few, if any, guidelines that deal with the instruction that takes place with the students that are attending cyber schools. We have many students that float back and forth between the district schools and cyber schools, and there's very little, if any, success in academic achievement that is attained in cyber schools. The state has mandated that cyber schools are a reality. We, in the Albert Gallatin Area School District, as well as every other school district in the Commonwealth, have to deal with the cards that were being dealt. It's doing a great, great injustice to the students, it's doing a great injustice to the taxpayers. I'm not totally opposed to cyber school, but I think that in Albert Gallatin, we have tried and are trying to have an in-house cyber school system. I believe that that is the best way for all of our students to attain academic success. We can follow the students because they're our students. If they want the opportunity to attend cyber school for whatever reason, that's a decision that the student and the parents would make. But at least, we would have a way to track those students and help them attain the academic success that they need. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Well, gee, Mr. Dunham, I agree with everything you said. There's not much I can add to that, except I was thinking that, you know, when you have cyber school at home, how much social interaction does a kid have with the peers? Is he maybe secluded and doesn't really get as much interaction with his peers as what a student of that age should have? I know one of the big problems is siphoning off all that money, you know, from the school district, $1 million, that's a lot of money. The thing of it is, the state's mandated that it be, so that's a reality that we have to accept. I, and there are many reasons why students do attend cyber schools, and of course, that's up to the parents. There are some parents who feel that maybe if their son or daughters not with some of the kids in the school, that could be a good thing, you know? Maybe some of the bad habits is not going to rub off, and I'm sure that there are kids going to cyber schools because of that very reason, that the parents feel that they want to be kept away from some of the bad apples, so to speak. But I agree that it's a problem, it does siphon a lot of money. In-house would be a great idea if it can be attained. That, I'm not sure, would solve the problem with many of the parents. And you know, the parents have the last say-so for the most part, especially when you have a mandate from a state that says that's their right to have that. So I agree with most of what you said, but it's something that we're going to have to face as a school board director.
Okay, Mr. Schultes?
Unfortunately, the other two candidates have also stole my thunder. I agree with their positions, that cyber school has a place, but it is a financial burden to the school district. It siphons off a lot of money, and you know, it's hurting the brick and mortar schools. But at the same time, there's certain, there's certain things that the cyber schools do offer, maybe certain classes that students can't take at the, at the high school, or the brick and mortar schools. There are some places for that, maybe students are not able to succeed in the traditional environment, there are some uses for that. And it would be wonderful if we were able to do that in an in-school, in an in-house basis. I think that would be a wonderful way to get the best of both worlds. However, at the same time, we are mandated by the state to do this. But currently, I don't think it is the perfect scenario. Additionally, as Mr. Ryan said, there's a socialization issue here. We have students who are not involved in the social aspects of school, they're doing the cyber schooling, and whether it be from a dedication, or a home, or what have you, we don't have them socializing at the same time. Now, these students are able to participate in the same things that they would at the school, but they don't have the same environment, the same aspects of school that a traditional brick and mortar school would. So in closing, I, it's something we're just going to deal with, it's been mandated by the state, but currently, it's just not the best scenario. And where it does have its place, it is a financial burden, and it does affect the socialization of the students, and I would be okay with a different scenario should it come down. Thank you very much.
Just a follow-up question, pretty much for all three of you. Basically, the way that, the way that I understand it anyway, is that the school districts have to pay the cyber schools the cost of what it is to educate the students. And part of that whole question comes up because obviously, they don't have near the expenses that the brick and mortar schools have. So if there was some kind of, and obviously, you would need some type of legislation for this, but if there was some type of legislation, say, where maybe the cost was maybe half, or two-thirds, or a third, or something like that, do you think that that would be more acceptable? And is there, you know, is there maybe something that could be done about this so that, you know, school districts aren't paying the full freight, full freight for something that they shouldn't really, maybe have to be paying all this money for? Mr. Dunham?
I think the best solution, the state has mandated that cyber school is a reality. Okay, that's, that's what we have to deal with. What I would like to see, as far as legislation, that students in any district in the Commonwealth would have to attend a cyber school within that district if the district chose to start their own cyber school. That way, you have continuity with curriculum, you have continuity with instruction, you have continuity with follow-up. The way it is now, as I previously stated, we have students that go out to cyber school for a period of time and come back, and there's little, if any, record of achievement that they've attained. This way, if there's legislation passed that says if the Albert Gallatin Area School District chooses to start and maintain and operate their own cyber school, then students in that district certainly have the right to go to cyber school, but they, they need to go to the cyber school that's operated by the Albert Gallatin Area School District. They get the benefits that their parents feel are important from a cyber school setting. The Albert Gallatin Area School District can, because they're held accountable for student achievement, they can, okay, have hands-on as far as the instruction that is done, and the act- done and the academic achievement that these students may hopefully benefit from in the cyber school setting. That way, you minimize the cost, you keep a better hand on the academic achievement, and they're your students, and you know them better than anyone else. Thank you.
Mark, you asked a great question. You know, as you know, I'm a proponent of House Bill 76. Now, if House Bill 76, for those people that don't know what House Bill 76 is, it's going to be a state law which states that school property taxes will be eliminated from every property owner here in the state of Pennsylvania. Now, they're going to have a hearing next Tuesday in the Finance Committee at the State House, and I guess they'll decide at that time whether they're going to bring this bill out on the floor. But you know, Mark, I know House Bill 76 like the back of my hand, but you know, that's never been brought up. You know, if, if House Bill 76 is passed, every school district will be given the same amount of money for every student in their school district. So we don't have these rich school districts with a lot more money than the poor school districts. If House Bill 76 is passed, every student will get the same amount of money. But you know, no one's ever brought up, well, how much will cyber school students get? Or what would the limits be? And that's something that hasn't been discussed, and you just brought that up, and that's a good question for me to go back to the state legislators and ask them, or maybe incorporate to the people that help write the bill, that you consider cyber school students? And if so, are you going to allocate the same amount of money for cyber school students as you do for students in a brick and mortar or whatever? So you brought up a very good question, and those are answers that's going to have to be answered, you know, later on, but at least now that issue's out, and I'm going to check into it. Good question.
Okay, thank you. Referring back to the question, cyber schools have their place. I can't, I wouldn't say they would ever replace the brick and mortar schools, but they have their place. There's reasons to have them, and there's reasons for students to go there. And I would be more in support of that if there was some avenue that, whether it be a house bill or what kind of legislation, that would allow them to be less of a financial burden to the district. I would also agree that there would need to be some kind of oversight with the district. Students need to be socialized and be able to be part of the district and be part of the schools they're with. So I would agree that, that should there be less of a financial burden, that this cyber school would be, as it is now, useful for some things. I would not say they should ever replace brick and mortar schools, but I think they provide opportunities that brick and mortar schools can't. So if we could find a happy medium, if there is a happy medium, and it wouldn't come from a school, it would come from a state legislature, it's, this being out of our hands, it would be something that would be a wonderful thing to have less of a financial burden. However, we're not there yet, and if it does come, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take the next question. In light of the Newtown school shootings, do you think your schools have adequate safety measures in place? Are there any changes you would like to see? We'll start with Mr. Ryan.
You know, in reviewing the personnel of the Albert Gallatin School District, I think I checked, I think we have 145 non-professional employees, of which we have eight security. Now, I didn't get a chance to check and see what schools they're, I know we have nine schools, six elementary, two middle, and one high school, but we have eight securitys. So I'm not exactly sure what their job is or what schools they are, what schools they're in, what their responsibilities are, whether they carry arms, and I doubt whether they do, because I would have heard about it probably if they do. Am I in favor of carrying, having guards in schools with, protect, arms? Put it more simply, I guess. I am. And with people that are properly trained, that are certified to how to handle a gun and so forth, and now, now this might be a little bit more monies out of the call for, I'm not exactly sure we're paying for eight now, but I'm not exactly sure whether they're armed or not. There are people who say, well, you know, whoever heard of someone carrying a gun in school? Well, I believe that Union Town may have one security person on site that does have a gun, I'm not sure. But I am in favor of having someone there at school. You know, these kids are precious, and if someone was to come to a school with a gun, well, what do you do? We could have the same thing happen in the Albert Gallatin School District as they had in Newtown, Connecticut. So I do believe that in today's society, you take no chances. I mean, you have a lot of loony tunnies out there, a lot of nuts, and I'm sure that we even have our share here in Fayette County in the Albert Gallatin School District, that at any time could, in any moment's notice, go off the deep end and do something serious. We need to protect our kids, and I believe that as a school board member, I would support that measure once it was brought before the entire school board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schultes?
Safety of our students is paramount. Education is the basics, basis of a school, but if the children can't be safe, then what's the point? However, the Albert Gallatin School District is, we have a lot of good things in place. There's a crisis plan in place, the administrators have met with the state police, they've done drills, they've done a lot of things, and we can get better. But at the same time, we've, we've approached this week, we know about this, and we're trying to be safe. We're trying to make certain the students are safe. Regarding the, the carrying of firearms, I don't advocate necessarily teachers being armed or anything of that, but if you would have a security personnel within the school district that were already trained amongst firearms, maybe former state police, former local police, who are now working at the school district, I could see them being armed. I could see maybe having an armed presence at the school, but not, not in a large scale, only people who have been trained before. I, I think it's wonderful that we have a good crisis plan. A crisis plan has been shared with other districts, that we've spoken to the state police, that we've done all these things, but we can get, get better. Does that mean having locks, lockdowns? Does that mean having metal detectors? Does that mean things of that nature? I, I don't know. That's something we'll have to look into and see. But at the same time, we're moving in the right direction. We have one, we have things in place, and we're worried about the students, and we are concerned about their safety, worried if anything happens. But you also have to consider, where do we go? Do we want to have an armed camp? Do we want to have students who are sort of like almost in a, you know, an environment that's uncomfortable with all the security? There's a fine line for these things, and we need to make certain our students are safe, but we don't want them to be in an armed camp either. So there's things we can do. There's more things we can do, there's more things we can look into, and we can get better at what we're doing. However, we are, as of right now, we've done a lot of things, and that's a good thing, that the safety is paramount in the Albert Gallatin School District. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Several months ago, I addressed the board in public session after the Newtown shooting. My comment to them at that time was a recommendation that the school district's architect be brought in to do a building-by-building survey from a security standpoint, and that recommendations be made to the board as far as improvements and changes, such as, we have a lot of entryways that are all glass. We have, okay, some buildings that don't have any security guards in them. We have done a good job as far as having a buzz-in system where the doors are locked and you need to buzz in and be recognized to be entered. But I would like to see the first thing that the district's architect do a building-by-building study from a security standpoint of each one of our buildings, bring those recommendations back to the board. I would like to see the state police do an evaluation. I would like to see a security firm brought in. Now, I realize that some of this is going to cost money, but I've got grandkids in that district. There are people that get up every morning and get their children ready for school with the hopes that they're going to school for an education and they're going to come home safe. That doesn't always happen, as we're aware of. So we need to be as proactive as possible. Does that mean that we put metal detectors and armed guards in our building? I don't know. I'm not an expert, but I think that we need to study the situation in each one of our buildings, see what the experts recommend, and then don't sit on it, but take action. And let me say that in my conversations with several of the board members, the present board has and is looking into improved security in Albert Gallatin. Thank you.
Bob, you want to take the next question?
Sure. State Representative Tim Mahoney has proposed consolidating school administrations in Fayette County with voters electing one school board. Are you in favor of this change, and can you please explain why or why not?
I'll start with Mr. Schultes.
I, regarding the, Mr. Representative Mahoney's plan, I'm not in favor of the plan as it is. I think, and I understand the reason for attempting to consolidate. I understand that as a school, as a state, we're always concerned with budget issues. We're always concerned with budget cuts and having enough, enough money to be able to run our schools and to educate, educate our students. However, I think, and I feel that if we were to consolidate schools, essentially, we'd just be masking our problem. Instead of having many administrations, we'd have modern administration, but to be able to administer all of the schools, we would have to have many administrators regardless. So essentially, by coming together for a large county school district, we would essentially be changing it just to lose our identity, but not necessarily to solve the issues of money. We would still have the same administration, just in a different form. I think that the possibility was that it may have involved closing schools, and I would not be in favor of that, you know? And that's one of the most heinous things I can think about. I was involved in that as a, as a child in my school district, and the possibility of closing my own elementary school, and that was just a terrible thing for a young student. So I wouldn't be in agreement with that. However, I would be in agreement with something along the lines of shared services. If we shared services with other school districts, that would be wonderful. If we could do, or within the county, if we could share to be able to do the services to save money, that would be a great thing. And the other thing with consolidation is such that we would lose our identity as the school district. We've always been the Albert Gallatin School District. We've always been the, you know, there's always been the other school districts. Those are our identities. And to consolidate to one school district, I don't know necessarily, we would be losing our identity. Sure, we still have the high schools, but at the same time, is I think we should have the ability to stay separate and to do what each school district wishes. I know that in West Virginia, they have county-wide school districts, but the counties are much smaller there. They're much smaller there, and they're able to do this. And we've, our school districts are almost as big as the county school districts in some places. And so I'm not in favor of the, the system as put forth by Representative Mahoney, but at the same time, I would be willing to consider things of consolidation of services, whether that be, whatever, whatever it would be, teachers or certain teaching or text schools or busing, whatever, but I would be willing to listen to those sort of things. But at the same time, consolidation in general, I'm not in favor of, I don't wish for us to lose our identity, whether, it doesn't matter to me whether it's a county school board or a local school board, that's not an issue for me. I just think we should be able to have the right to, and the ability to do our own thing and to make our own decisions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dunn.
I'm not in favor of Mr. Mahoney's proposed consolidation of the schools into a county system as presented. However, I think that we can improve upon what we're doing, we can do some shared services, we can do some co-op purchasing. There's no reason why at least some of the school districts in the county can't go to a county-wide purchasing of textbooks, why we can't do food service purchasing. We can do a lot of those things. We can look at consolidation of transportation in, in some areas. Now, some, some areas of the county, quite frankly, just aren't going to lend itself to that, but there are other areas in the county where that's a possibility. I think that it needs to be seriously looked into, and quite frankly, it hasn't in the proposal. We can do more than what we're doing now with co-op and shared services that will save taxpayers' money. It will improve what we do. I am not, however, in favor of the consolidation. Bigger is not always better. The citizens, in my opinion, will lose local control of their school district. They're going to lose the local input that they have now, because the bigger anything becomes, people become just simply a number. They're no longer a name, they're no longer, okay, a valid concern because there are so many people to deal with. We can save money, we can improve on shared services, but that doesn't mean that we need to consolidate our schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I agree with everything these two gentlemen have just said. Gee, we'd be great on the school board together, wouldn't we? But again, what it is, you know, you have those 9-0, 9-0, 9-0 votes, and I always said that if I was elected, it might be a few 8-1 votes. But generally, I do agree with these gentlemen on that school consolidation. Mr. Mahoney means, well, I'm sure he wants to save money, but, you know, combining the services and the purchasing power and so forth, I agree with Mr. Dunn, that's, that's great. Identity is one thing I was really worried about, and local control of the school boards, that's another thing I was concerned about. You know, when people hire school board members, they like to be able to, be able to at least call them or meet them on the street at the store, your local store, instead of going to Conner'sville to maybe shop or at the other end of the county. The only thing I can, and meet the candidates in the store, but the only thing I was thinking of, and we have a nice VOTEC school in Conner'sville, we have one up here, and that was a big concern, do they build a new VOTEC school? Well, if you combine everything together as far as, as far as consolidation goes, I mean, where would the kids in Conner'sville go to VOTEC? Would it go down there? Would it come up here? Would we have to keep both schools open? That's a big concern. Someone mentioned a while ago, oh, I think, Mr. Dunn, you just mentioned, the purchasing of textbooks. You know, folks, well, I don't think any of us have purchased textbooks recently, but I do know that we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on textbooks and paper in the schools. And one idea I came up with, which was really a wild idea, some people say it's really fantastic, and other people say, well, we're not exactly sure. I would like to see every student in our school district have a small tablet to do their work on. It would teach the young kids especially, and believe me, these first and second and third graders know how to use a computer. You may be surprised at how good they are, but they're really great. I would like to see each student with a tablet. You may say, gee, now you're talking about cutting taxes, and then now you're going to spend money. No! All that money you spend on textbooks, you got to constantly replace the textbooks. Now, you're going to have to replace the tablets too, but you can put a small chip in so no one could steal it. If the kids lost it, you could find it. You could get a, a contract to repair it. I think there's a lot of advantages in something that needs to be explored, but spending money on hundreds of thousands of dollars on textbooks every year, I think's crazy. But if you had a small tablet, the teachers could put their homework on the tablet. I know my little nephew comes home and he gets a computer, and he goes on a site that they have at the school there at Plava, and he does his homework assignments on the computer at home. Now, some kids don't have that luxury to have a computer, but, you know, to have a computer in school and all the kids do get a computer class, I think maybe, maybe one period a week, but to have a small tablet for each one of them, and to do assignments right there at their desk, and every student in the school district have it, I think it's something we need to look into, and I think it probably would benefit, benefit our kids. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Carla, you want to take question number six?
Fraser School District remains the only school district in Fayette County with an anti-nepotism policy. Would you like to see one in place for the Albert Gallatin School District? Can you explain why you're in favor or against it?
I'm not in favor of a nepotism policy for several reasons. If we're saying that an individual can't do the job... If we're saying that an individual can't do the job because they're related to someone on the board. I have two sons that are employed in the Albert Gallatin Area School District. They've been there for a number of years. I have two daughter-in-laws that are employed in the Albert Gallatin School District. They've been there for a number of years. They're doing a fine job. Don't take my word for it, ask their administrators. I had nothing to do with them getting hired. But if we would have an anti-nepotism policy, we're eliminating qualified people from serving in whatever position they're being hired. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Ryan?
That's our favorite question in the market. Well, last time, I made a statement a little bit out there, but I said, if I was a school board member and a relative of mine even applied for a job, I would resign. Now, folks, what's that tell you? That tells you that when it comes to hiring a relative, no, 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 we don't play those games with me. We don't say, well, I will abstain and you can vote for my relative. And when you have a relative come, then you can abstain and I'll vote for your relative. I'm in favor of a nepotism policy, I definitely am. And it's one of those things, you know, sometimes when you mention that, you step on people's toes, but that's how firmly I believe that relatives that are sitting on the board should not have their relatives being hired in the school system. It's, you know, it's pretty simple and you have people constantly complaining, well, how many school board employees, or how many school employees does that school board employee have or a school board member have? And it goes down the line. Now, I think almost everyone on our Albert Gallatin School Board has relatives that work for the school system. And were they hired during their term in office? I'm not exactly sure, you know, when they were hired, but the fact is, you know, you can't very easily vote against a fellow board member's relative if they apply for a job. You know, that's pretty hard because you've got to work with these people and sort of cooperate and be a team player and so forth and so on. But I just feel very strongly about the nepotism policy and I think that we, and I'm in favor of it. Now, if we say we can't have a nepotism policy, how many times, folks, have you been to a school board meeting or watched a school board meeting on TV when they had it on TV and someone came up to be appointed to the school system and the individual would say, I pass? Well, I would feel if there's no nepotism policy, at least have that school board member say, I pass because that individual is my son, or I pass because that individual is my daughter-in-law or my cousin. In other words, just don't say, I pass. And then the people say, well, gee, why did he pass? Be upfront, say, I'm passing and here's the reason why. And then everything's out in the open. Folks, the more you keep things out in the open, that's what's wrong with our society nowadays and why people don't trust school board members and state representatives and county commissioners, it's because everything's done behind closed doors. Bring it out in the open, let the sunshine shine on it, and then let the people make the decision. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Shultes?
Like Mr. Ryan, I also agree with an anti-nepotism policy. I believe that the best person for the job should be hired for whether it be administrative principal or teaching position. I believe we shouldn't be concerned with who knows who or who's related to who or, you know, what connection you have. It's more important that we have the best possible candidates for the job, whether it be someone you know or someone you don't know. It should be the best person who applies, whoever it is, wherever they're from, whoever wants to teach in this school district. That's wonderful. And if you're the best person for the job, you should be hired so we can provide the best education possible. The only issue we run into is what if that person who is the best qualified is a relative? So I, I'm in favor of an anti-nepotism policy, but one that has to be structured so if the best candidate is a relative, they should have that opportunity. But there should not be any hiring of relatives just for the sake of being relatives. It should be the best candidate for the job, no matter who they are. And that should be something that we strive for, it should be something that we do. We should have the best candidates, teachers, principals, administrators, whoever they are, wherever they, you know, wherever they're from, so that we can provide the best teaching environment, the best schools we can for the students, no matter who they're related to. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, this is going to be our final question. I'll take it. Governor Corbett has made a number of funding cuts for school districts across the state. How do you think the cuts have affected the Albert Gallatin School District and are there programs being cut that you would like to see brought back? We'll start with Mr. Ryan.
Folks, you cannot spend money that you don't have. And I've mentioned this previously, the governor's making cuts to education, but he's also making cuts in other departments as well. You know, we could keep going further and further and further in debt to when you, as you know, the further you go in debt, the worse it becomes. So we're sooner or later going to pay our bills. Now, the governor is supporting, and I mentioned this before, House Bill 76. For those who don't know what House Bill 76 is, it's simply a bill that the state legislature hopefully will pass in the next couple of months, which will eliminate all property taxes in the state of Pennsylvania and then impose a one cent increase on non-food and certain services, and this money will be put into a lockbox only for education. You see, if we get this House Bill 76 passed, there won't be such thing as the governor allocating or not allocating or cutting money out of the budget. The monies will be there, it will be debited to each school district evenly, every student will receive the same amount of money and there won't be any questions. Now, here's what the good part is, folks. If you have school board members that have been on there a while, for years, and they're used to spending money and popping you with a tax increase every year, it's going to be pretty hard for them to say, gee, I only have a certain amount of money now to spend thirteen hundred dollars per student, I have to live within my means. But once you're used to spending money like a drunken sailor, I mean, it's pretty hard to come back to reality and say, well, gee, I'm going to now try to come down to earth and spend money the way it should be spent. Folks, thirteen hundred dollars per student, doesn't really sound like a lot, but again, each school district's going to have to live within their means. And if the governor, and this will be out of the governor's hands, what I think he's going to have to do is, once this bill is passed by the state legislature and by the state senate, all he has to do is sign it and that's one big burden off his back. Now, how has these cuts affected the Albert Gallatin School District? I really am not privy to that information. I'm not exactly sure what programs they have cut up until this particular point or what programs they may intend to cut. I do know that those 4,438 students that we have in the Albert Gallatin School District, I hope they're getting the best education they can get for the amount of monies that we have. So again, on the school board, hopefully I'm there to be able to say, I'm spending that money that the state gives us, thirteen hundred dollars for each student, you know, if I'm elected, I'll be there and I wouldn't have been there for years and years and years spending the money like they've been spending. So you may say, well, gee, are they really overspending? Well, I think there's places where you could cut. And you know, I haven't mentioned that $600,000 that the Duke plant over in Mason Town, two years ago started giving to the school district. So with the $600,000, there was a two recent increases in our millage, that's a good bit of extra money they've gotten in the last couple of years now. Did they spend it wisely? That's a question that will have to be answered, I guess, at a later date, once we evaluate the whole situation. But hopefully, the school board members that are elected, hopefully they can spend within their means and do a good job of doing it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Shultes?
Currently, we are fortunate in the Albert Gallatin School District. Because we are, we were the recipient of the SIG grant, we are currently in the black. We have, for the next, for this year or for the next year, we have surpluses and we will be in the black for the next two years. But the surpluses do evolve every year and that's the current figures. We don't know what it'll be next year, really, on measures, forecasts, predictions. And so what we need to do is we need to make sure our house is in the black because the money's not always going to be there. The grant was for three years. After the three years are up, we're going to be, we won't have that money. Maybe we get a new grant, maybe we look for other avenues to be able to obtain money. But we need to make certain that our house is in the black. We need to make certain that we live within our means, to be certain that, you know, we don't have anything frivolous, to do what we need to do. And to make certain that we don't cut services, we don't cut schools, anything of that nature. But we need to make certain we live within our means, we need to make certain that we don't raise taxes, we need to make, because it's a burden to the taxpayers and the residents of the school district. But we can't rely on something that happens with the legislature. We are not the legislature, we're just the school board for the Albert Gallatin School District. And we can't depend on whether the legislature passes a bill, but we don't know if they'll pass a bill. It'll be a wonderful thing and I would support some kind of relief for property taxes. But all it boils down to, we're school board members and we need to be able to be certain that we live within our means and we need to make certain that we don't spend frivolously because at some point this grant isn't going to be here. So we need to make certain that we are within the black, we're not in the red, and do everything we can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
I think I'll be used to that by now.
During Governor Corbett's first year, he cut the Albert Gallatin Area School District reimbursement millions of dollars. I believe it was 3.2 million dollars, but it was millions of dollars from one year to the next year. Because of that, and before the SIG grant was awarded to the district, there were numerous staff layoffs, supplies were cut, programs were eliminated, consolidated or cut, students have larger classes, there are less services being provided. That's a reality. If we look at it from a personal standpoint, if we run our household budget on a certain amount of money and that money is drastically cut for whatever reason, changes have to be made. The school district was forced by Governor Corbett and the state legislature to make drastic cuts. Those cuts aren't good for education. When you have larger classes, students get less individual attention. When there are supply orders that are reduced or cut, that doesn't give the students what they might necessarily need in order to achieve academic achievement to the greatest extent. When the technology program, the computers are getting older and older and have problems, but if there's no money there to replace them or to fix them, we have to deal with that. And the bottom line is, our kids suffer. We have one of the lowest tax rates in the county. That's something that we need to be thankful for. Is it as good as what we want? Absolutely not. Can it get better? I don't know. Sometimes you can squeeze a turn up only so much. Governor Corbett is not a friend of public education. The legislature in Harrisburg is not a friend to public education. Cuts that are being made are being made in a harmful way. If the money's not there, okay, but say, over a period of three years, I'm going to reduce your subsidy 2% this year, 2% next year, 2% the following year. You don't jump in and say, I'm going to cut it 6% or I'm going to cut it 8% in one year. You can't do that from a physical standpoint and not cut the education that's occurring. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our questions and I will give each of the candidates thirty, or three minutes, I'm sorry, to give your closing statement. And I'll start with Mr. Shultes.
I see you're trying to get rid of us early, I see. I'd like to thank the Herald Standard, Mr. Dunham and Mr. Ryan and everyone else here today for this opportunity. I would be honored if the voters of the Albert Gallatin School District would choose me as one of the new candidates for the Albert Gallatin School District. It's my school district, it's where I graduated from, it's where I live. It's something that I care about deeply. One of my, one of the jobs I do is I'm solicitor for my township and it's one of the things I enjoy the most because it's my township. And I would love to have the opportunity to be on the school board because it's my school's board. And it just makes me excited and I would love to have the opportunity to do it because I just want my schools to be the best they can be. I want to make certain that they are everything they possibly can be. I know they're good and I want them to be better. And so, I also understand that we need to be, like I said before, we need to be stewards of the money. We need to make certain that the students are getting what they deserve and to be certain that we are able to live within our means, to not have to cut services, but to not have to raise taxes. In closing, I'd like to say that regardless of who you vote for, regardless of who you support and what your beliefs are, to make certain when the primaries come on May 21st, to make certain you get out and vote regardless of who you vote for. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dunham?
Last time. Last time. I would, again, agree with Mr. Shultes and urge you to get out and vote. Sure, I would like you to get out and vote for Mike Dunham, but I want you to vote for the person that you feel, from the very depths of your heart, will do the best job because that's the person that you have to be satisfied with. I've been on the board off and on, I've voted for six different budgets, I've never voted for a tax increase. Now, does that mean that I never will vote for a tax increase? No. But I said that to say this, it's not a knee-jerk reaction. It's not something that is taken lightly. I will, if elected, do my very, very best to make sure that the money is spent wisely, that we can provide the best education for your children and your grandchildren, that we can help you prepare them for the best life that possibly can have. Again, vote for the best person. I hope that you think that Mike Dunham is one of those. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Well, I'll use my time to, Mr. Dunn, I mentioned a while ago that the class, the classes were, I guess, increased because of the budget cuts. Well, folks, I did a lot of reviewing and I reviewed the student-teacher ratio in each one of our schools. Wilson and Mason Town and is, I believe, 11 to 1. Mason Town and Friendship and Wilson's 11 to 1 student ratio teacher. Smithfield is 16 to 1. The high school, 17 to 1. Plava, I believe, and Swainy is 12 to 1. So it seems like pretty small classes in my eyes, and maybe I'm missing something along the line. And I didn't, I've heard about these grants that the school district has been given, but no one mentioned about the $42 million we're in debt. The Albert Gallatin School District is $42 million in debt. And if this House Bill 76 passes, we're going to be obligated not only to pay that debt at 18% of our normal property assessment for the year, but we're also going to have to pay that debt off before we can move on. So that's just something that I wanted to clarify. People need to know that we're still in debt even though we get these grants. Folks, I want to thank the Herald Standard for having Mr. Shultes, Mr. Dunham and I here today. Hopefully you've listened to us and you can evaluate on what we've had to say. As most of yous know, I'm a pretty good conservative. I believe in tightening the belt and then tightening it again. Maybe I'm...
Maybe the school directors and the school system, maybe they haven't wasted a lot of money. But, you know, I've heard of all these cuts today. We cut here, and we've cut here, and we cut here. Did I hear today that the teacher salaries were cut? The teachers are still getting paid their full salaries, but yet we're cutting the kids. We're cutting services to the kids. Don't you think that maybe those 4,458 children that we have in the Albert Gallatin School System, don't you think that maybe, instead of cutting services, we may stop increasing teacher salaries every year? Do you think maybe that might be a good idea? Folks, you know where I'm coming from and where I stand. I may lose some teacher votes, but I'm going to tell you the way it is, folks. A lot of people would like to step on people's toes. But I'm going to let you know where I stand, and we'll let the chips fall where they may. Folks, on Election Day, I would ask you for your vote. These two gentlemen here are honorable, and if you voted for them, you wouldn't be making a mistake either, believe me. Thank you for your time, folks.
Okay. Once again, we want to thank the candidates for coming in and agreeing to meet with us today. That's going to wrap up our show. We also want to thank our viewers out there for watching. We'll see you later.